The world's biggest annual gathering of space communities comes to Baku. Emerging space powers are innovating their technology. Join our special panel only on CGTN and RSTV.
We are now in the process of carrying out mission 16. In two years, the Chinese Space Station has completed its journey of flight, and is entering the new phase of application and development. At this time, I represent the Chinese government to congratulate on the 74th International Space Forum held in the capital city of Azerbaijan, Baku, in the event.
For over 70 years, every year the International Space Forum gathers all the global航天 family, and meets together. The task of the forum is to connect all the global航天ers, and transmit the message of unity, peace, and cooperation that will drive humanity together. The International Space Federation has a long-standing relationship with all the members, and the forum is here again this year. It has been a year and a half since the forum was held in Azerbaijan in 1973.
I hope that all the members of the forum can use this opportunity to communicate and share experiences, and collaborate. Let us work together to explore the universe, and to promote the prosperity of the global航天. In the foreign field, we should actively encourage the creation of a collective that will help humanity, and build a beautiful home for humanity.
Welcome to Baku, the capital city of Azerbaijan. The country is also known as the land of fire. My name is Wu Lei from CGTN. Actually, this is my very first time in Baku, and it is also the first time that CGTN and RSTV are collaborating on a special program in this beautiful studio with my friend Rufah.
You are so welcome, Mr. Liu, and actually you are so welcome to our hometown. I am Rufah Hamzaev, as you mentioned. And after 50 years, actually, Baku is experiencing the excitement and joy of the International Astronomical Congress for the second time. And more than 5,000 participants from more than 100 countries are able to discuss the main issues of the space industry.
Indeed, Rufah, that this time that a lot of space leaders and distinguished guests, engineers, scientists are getting together here in Baku to discuss the latest trends of space technologies and also how the space technology can be involved to address the global issues.
Sure, absolutely. Actually, we do know that human exploration of space has been going for over 60 years. And today, we face numerous challenges, such as climate change, resource scarcity. And I am particularly curious about how developing countries and also emerging economies can innovate in space technology and tackle these difficulties, and also how can we further, how to say, improve the quality and efficiency of cooperation?
Exactly, and there are indeed the focal points of discussion for many experts and also media here attending the IAC this year. And today, we are very delighted to invite leaders from various international organizations and space agencies and also to join our discussion. And let me introduce all the guests first. Dr. Christine Feitinger, the IAF Executive Director, and also Ms. Yuqi, the Secretary General of Asia-Pacific Space Cooperation Organization, and also Mr. Khunbly Moudal, CEO of South African National Space Agency, and Mr. Samadin Astov, Chairman of the Board of Arthur Cosmos. He will join us very soon.
Yeah, and let's start with Mr. Feitinger. Actually, the main theme of this year's forum is global challenges and opportunities. Give space a chance. And what are the main challenges actually for this industry?
Well, we are, first of all, from the International Astronautical Federation point of view, we are extremely happy to be back here in Baku and gather a global space community to exchange again and to showcase and to set up new connections. We are facing today a lot of global challenges. You have mentioned a few of them: global warming, climate change, all the other issues that are around. And space can be a very efficient solution for them. This has been a domain that was a few years ago still very much limited to only the traditional space nations. But since several years now, emerging space nations are coming up to develop their space ecosystem. And that, I think, is the challenge for an emerging country, to set up a functional, efficient space ecosystem that combines the legal basis, the infrastructure, the industry base, but most importantly, also the academia, meaning the education of the young generation, that builds up the workforce in space of tomorrow. And today, we see that space nations are supporting emerging countries and cooperating with them in order to bring them into the club. And meetings like the International Astronautical Congress, as we have it this week here in Baku, are a very efficient tool to bring these different stakeholders in space together, from industry, from agency, from academia, the young generation, the students from all over the world, space nations and emerging space nations equally.
Okay, let me turn to Yuqi, the Secretary General of Asia-Pacific Space Cooperation Organization. So, as Dr. Christine just mentioned, this is a platform for talks, discussions, and we can evolve. What's your expectation to this largest annual gathering of space communities?
Yeah, heritage means modernity, space meets culture, and Europe meets Asia. This is Baku. I'm here. I'm very glad to attend the 74th IAC as the international space regional organization. I think it's a great opportunity for the organization and for our member states to attend this IAC, to exchange our knowledge. And especially the IAC, you know, is the aerospace professional Olympic. All over the world, the experts, scientists, engineering, students, we gather together in Baku. And our member states also show our achievement and our working style to the international, to match and to link with the international in our professional technology, science, and its application.
Actually, as we mentioned earlier, Samadin Alim, Mr. Samadin, he will join our program later, and he is here, and let's invite him to the...
Welcome.
You are so welcome, please.
Hello.
Thank you for joining us.
We talked about the new members of Space Club. And actually, we also do know that space industry is a specific field, and also it needs highly professional, I mean, employees also. And how do you assess the current situation in this sphere? And how could we join, I mean, personal potential in this sector? And whether joint programs could be considered for improvements or how?
Thank you very much, and greetings to your audience. As TV as well as CGTN, it's a great pleasure for me to be here in the beautiful city of Baku. And I just want to say on behalf of my country, South Africa, it's been a warm welcome. And we've brought in a huge delegation from South Africa because indeed, as my colleague said on the left, this is an Olympics of space. I just want to say, this is critical, particularly for developing countries. And I'll speak here on behalf of Africa as well, that collaboration becomes key. And therefore forging frameworks that harnesses and ensure that, you know, we have shared common goals, we have shared mutual benefits that we all can bring into building the programs that we need. It's critical for us. And so, South Africa, we are here, continue in building these networks. We are here to ensure that we do continue in strengthening capacity. And therefore, for us, as part of the emerging nations, we feel that it's critical that we invest on human capital development. We also invest on ensuring that we create an environment that's conducive for us to inculcate a culture of entrepreneurship, a culture of business development. Because this is where you're going to pursue and attract young minds that are very disruptive and those that can become part of your space program. And therefore, as emerging nations, we feel that collaboration is very critical. But it should be done, of course, within this sphere where it's going to ensure we benefit one another, but also above all of that, to ensure that there is technology transfer in cases where there's a possibility of doing that. And therefore, it's exciting for us as a young space agency to be engaging with major nations and those developed space nations. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Okay, so Mr. Samadin Astov, thank you very much for joining us. And Rufah just mentioned the second time for Azerbaijan to host the IAC. And what's your take on this platform? Because there are so many thousands of space scientists, engineers coming together in Baku. Which topics impress you most? What are your focused areas in this time?
Well, today Azerbaijan, Baku City and space community is having very exciting and memorable days. The 74th chapter of International Astronomical Congress that is being held in Baku City has gathered today, as of number of this morning, about 5,630 people together. And I want to share one very positive news with you. Today, the number of the countries, the participants that are participating in Baku Congress has reached 136, which to my knowledge is an absolute record for the IAC so far. In 2019, when Azerbaijan government promised during the bidding of the IAC in Baku City that the Baku Congress will bring together different nations and countries who does not necessarily have the access to the space community and space technologies. And today, we have successfully succeeded that promise. The topic of our congress was considered as "Give space a chance." And as of now, we have brought to this congress so many youngsters from the developing countries, especially from the Middle East and North-South African countries. And regarding the plenary program, I want to note that during the preparation to the congress, we have achieved additional more success where 2,000, 3,000, out of 3,600 abstracts, there were a number of 95 countries that scientists have shared their abstracts. So the plenary program is very much full. We have more than 10 high-level plenaries. But during the week, we will have, we have already started, but we are having almost 190 different events, considering the plenary program, considering the technical sessions, scientific sections, late-breaking news. So we really think that this week will be very, very productive, as well as the participants will have a very memorable day during their stay in Baku City.
Thank you.
My next question with you, Mr. Feitinger. As Mr. Moudal mentioned, actually, similar platforms also create new huge opportunities actually for collaboration. And in your opinion, what the networking opportunities for collaboration are, especially, I mean, for international agencies? And what does the prospect of cooperation with each other in the field of space industry look like?
Well, one distinctive feature of this International Astronautical Congress is its diversity. The diversity of participants coming from all over the world, coming from all different categories of stakeholders in space, from academia, industry, space agency, the young generation, and of course, the sheer volume of the program. But many of the participants to this congress, they come here because of the networking aspect and the networking opportunity. We always, after the congress, do a kind of questionnaire to all the participants, and it always turns out that networking opportunity is the main driver for people to come to this congress. I have talked to many heads of agencies who say coming to an International Astronautical Congress spares me maybe several weeks of traveling around the world in order to meet my stakeholders and my colleagues from other countries. And here, they are all there. And I can tell you that the program is packed with bilateral meetings where really the cooperation aspects are discussed. And that is really the benefit. The International Astronautical Federation has been created in very difficult geopolitical times in 1950. And we've done this because we want to connect space people, and we do this up to today, even in times of geopolitical difficulties.
Thank you so much.
And let's turn to Ms. Mr. Moudal, CEO of South African National Space Agency. Today, our topic is "Space for All: Creativity and Collaboration." We have talked a lot about collaboration. I want to know that for South Africa, because we know that your country is also developing your own space projects, satellites, other products. So can you tell, share with us some of your creative space projects? What are the future trends? How about the collaboration with other countries?
Thank you very much. For South Africa, of course, owing to our very strong space policy and strategy that has been approved by Cabinet in 2008, the emphasis has always been developing a program that's relevant, developing a program that will ensure that we address some of the societal challenges. But also, what's very important in our, in our, in our space policy and strategy is that one of collaboration. But what we focusing on right now in South Africa is, first, it's on building human capital because it's critical. You cannot collaborate when you do not have the human resources that you require. And for, secondly, it's investing in innovation, research and development because that will catapult South African space program into a solid foundation that will ensure that we create an environment that's conducive and the space ecosystem that's conducive for the young entrepreneurs and so on to come. And therefore, we have invested quite significantly in a number of areas. But what's critical is on the downstream segment, where you have to look at applications that are relevant, applications that are tailored to address some of the environmental challenges, applications that will ensure that we manage and monitor our natural resources, but also to ensure that as we do that, those natural resources can be channeled into programs that will ensure that we build a technological advancement and also build a space program. When it comes to international cooperation, it is very critical for us. You may have heard, we collaborate on the downstream with other countries. On one front, on GEO, which is the Global Earth Observation, it's a group on earth observation, where we're building a global earth observation system of systems, which is so critical, and number of countries that are there. We also work with a number of countries in Africa, on Digital Earth Africa, which is a platform that will ensure that we tailor our products and services to address some of the societal challenges that we facing. We have moved towards now investing in space exploration, which is really exciting for us. Part of what we are building today is what we call our Deep Space Network in Western Cape, where we will be hosting, because of our geographic advantage, we welcome every other partner to come and work with us on putting together infrastructure that will ensure that we do explore the universe. And this is really exciting for us. We host the Regional Space Weather Center in our space sciences program, which is one of the world-class facility that we have, which we are also inviting collaborators to come and work with us. But we are very excited that there are other new opportunities that are coming in the networks that we're building within here and some of the agreements that I'll share with you later that we've signed in South Africa. Thank you.
Ms. Jie, actually, what's your point of view about this theme? I mean, "Space for All," and actually, we do know that, we know from the history, that for many decades, there was so-called monopoly in the field of space, and there were the activities of a few countries. But now, the situation has completely changed. But how does this affect the field of space exploration? I mean, joining the new members to this club?
You mean, joined the multinational organization?
Yeah.
Thank you for your question. Maybe many years ago, the development of the space technology are very independent. From the ESA, this is the first regional space cooperation union under the European Union. This is the first, and the EBSCO is the second. Now, we have 12 members. We are working on the cutting-edge of the science, technology, and application. I think the organization provide our member state the very good opportunity for their capacity building. According to our convention, our work on the cooperative project and activities, training is always the main point of our organization. We provide our member state all kinds of training, especially the training for the next generation. I think the tailored training is the first point for the capacity building. The second is the infrastructure. We share, we construct the infrastructure, and we share all the infrastructure. And this can save our member state their time and their budget, and they can use the others', member states' infrastructure to finish all their missions. The third is, I think, the all the satellite resources sharing is also bring our member states a very high stage. No matter you are in what kind of level, this stage always can push you and pull you to the highest.
The world's biggest annual gathering of space communities comes to Baku. Emerging space powers are innovating their technology. Join our special panel only on CGTN and RSTV. As many countries around the world have attached great importance to the development of their space sector. And earlier, I talked with many heads of international space agencies on their analysis on creativity and collaboration. Let's take a listen.
There are many elements in this collaboration because space is always a strategic capability. And we realize it as a national strength. In the coming days, it's continuing to remain as a very important strength for any nation to work on this. So we need to be careful with regard to the partnerships. We should also be careful about the type of engagement that will result in mutually beneficial or it is creating unnecessary competition or adversaries in this sector. These are geopolitically important topics which we need to understand and discuss. So as a nation, these policy decisions are always taken at the higher level and not in my level, of course. But then, we are happy to work with every aspiring nation who wants to create the space capability as a technical technology organization. And in fact, we know that we also got benefited by the people who actually worked in space in the past and shared some knowledge with us. That's why we are here. And it's not all that we worked on it and expand it. But it's important that for new people who are interested to work in space, we do extend our helping hand. And this is our plan. And our honorable Prime Minister also looks at it as everybody is one family. And this is the way he, you know, put it in front of the whole of the world. And we would like to extend our friendship to everybody in terms of collaborating in space, but keeping in view of all those points which I mentioned in the beginning.
This is, I think, a vital issue. I always underline it in all international meetings. If we don't collaborate, if we don't cooperate, it is very difficult for many countries to do something in space because it is very hard, very risky, very expensive, yes, very costly. So when we join our forces, we can do it easily and quickly. Otherwise, it will take long time and it will be very expensive. So as Turkish Space Agency, we have open doors policy, open doors. Our doors are wide open to everyone, including smaller and emerging countries, including them. So I can say we have excellent relations with many countries and space agencies all over the world, in five continents. You will see here in IAC, we collaborate with all of them, and I am very glad about that.
We know that International Astronautical Federation is the largest organization for space communities. So but in recent years, a lot of emerging space nations also trying to develop their own projects. So what do you think are the major challenges for them? How to, you know, boost their development in a more efficient and collaborative way?
Yes, indeed, as you say, the International Astronautical Federation today can be considered really as the most powerful and biggest organization that brings together, as I said, emerging countries with developed space nations. Space today is seen by many countries as an efficient tool in order to tackle socio-economic difficulties and challenges. You have mentioned climate change, agriculture, transport, traffic. All these areas can be, and today need to be supported by space assets and by space infrastructure. And today, no country can ignore this. But it is a challenge to bring this also to the real benefits of space, bring this to the attention of decision-makers, of the governments, of the political circles in the countries. And therefore, it is so important to have also events like the International Astronautical Congress where we also bring in politicians. We have a dedicated meeting for international members of parliaments and ministers where they are informed about the state of the art of what space can bring for emerging countries, for countries in general, and how they can get into the space club. But I think very important is the support also from space nations, the cooperation between emerging space nations to learn from each other, to present best practices, and to give really space a chance, as the motto is here for this congress, in countries where space still a few years ago was something rather exotic. Today, it is reality.
Mr., with your permission, Mr. Astov, actually, we talked about the new members of Space Club, let's say, and also Azerbaijan itself is a new member of the Space Club. Nearly 10 years, we have 10 years of experience. And satellites of Azerbaijan, we could see in the orbit, and also commercial services provided. But what does the, I mean, potential of Azerbaijan look like? And what opportunities are there for the development in this field?
Yes, indeed. Azerbaijan is a very relatively new member of the International Space Club. But I can note that we are quite active participants of different international organizations. From 2018, we are a member of the International Astronautical Federation. From 2018, we are a member of the International Astronautical Federation, but we are also members of different post-international regional organizations like global satellite operators organizations, space observatory, climate observatory organizations, as well as different regional organizations. Technological advancements in the recent years have given access to different countries to boost their space programs. In terms of small and efficient satellites, better launch capabilities, and also better communication systems has eliminated a lot of barriers for the space countries, for the agencies to enter the space nation, space community. And from that point of view, the international cooperation is also the very important topic. As Azerbaijan Space Agency, we give a big importance to the international collaborations. During the Astronautical Congress in Baku City, we will be signing memorandums with different space agencies like Brazil, Israel, Kazakhstan, Southern African Space Agency. So this type of cooperations is giving us a lot of capabilities, new experience, capacity building and transfer of knowledge. And with the mindset of supporting each other, we will hopefully bring and succeed in our space programs together.
DLA, actually, with the same question, I want to address. Yes, how do you see actually the opportunities of bilateral relationships and also the opportunities of Azerbaijan, the potential of Azerbaijan?
Thank you very much. It's really exciting for us. We, South Africa, have been very impressed with the economic development that we're seeing here in Azerbaijan. And we've also seen back in South Africa the role of the space program and how it has contributed in creating new opportunities on high-tech employment, as well as creating opportunities for new businesses and startup. And therefore, we are very excited. We're saying that as emerging nations, there are interdependence that we have to really seriously launch on, because that's going to help us in really building capacity. But we also are saying that as we do that, it is critical that we retain our autonomy, because that also assists us in prioritizing, in responding to our national priorities and national interests. So that's also critical. I just want to also emphasize that we've seen, you know, the new norm, or the new normal with the outbreak of COVID-19, that we have to constantly rethink on how we look at cooperation going forward. And therefore, for us as emerging space nations, we feel that if we do define a framework based on shared goals, based on shared vision, that we can ensure that, of course, with a huge amount of mutual accountability, that as emerging space nations, we can work together in really ensuring that we do build these. But what's critical as we address our own national challenges is that how do we begin to create a platform in which we can provide global solutions by co-creation and as well partnering with those advanced nations, of course, looking at our mutual benefits and so on. So for us in South Africa, it's really exciting that we will be signing, of course, with Azer Cosmos to begin to forge this collaboration, but also strengthening our bilateral cooperation between the two nations to benefit our people. Please go ahead.
Thank you for your question. The newly emerging space countries are growing very fast, like Azerbaijan. You know, I used to work for China National Space Agency. So in my experience of working for the CAC, I can just give this four suggestions. First is the very sustainable and stable strategy. This strategy, space strategy, can give you the guidance of how to develop. The second is, you know, China CAC has the five-year development plan. This five-year plan implemented in your space development step-by-step manner. And the third is the state strengthens the development in budget in space domain. And the fourth, of course, the international cooperation, to find your best partner, to help you always stand on the other's shoulder.
Azerbaijan has presented itself to us and I think to the whole world, not only as an outstanding host with traditional outstanding hospitality and excellent organization here at this congress. But it has shown already tremendous success in its space ecosystem development. And I think one of the decisive factors of making this happen is really the outstanding support from the leadership of the country. This has been mentioned yesterday as well at the opening ceremony. In Azerbaijan, space is considered an important pillar in its technological development. And if this is the policy in a country, there will be budgets available, and that will drive again the development of space technologies, which will then in turn again support the overall technological development of the country. So we're extremely happy to see this as a perfect example of how an emerging country can thrive and can proceed. We're extremely happy that a big number of top-level specialists from Azerbaijan are now also active in our IEF committees, discussing with specialists from all over the world on the same level, topics of different areas, from space exploration, space applications, to topics like even space and society. So this is very exciting to see, and I can only congratulate Azerbaijan to this development.
Okay, so Mr. Astadov, and we know that you just mentioned Azerbaijan is a new player in the space industry, but also has long-term plans for this development. So what factors will you consider when you want to collaborate with other nations? What factors influence you most?
Well, in fact, international space programs like International Space Station, James Webb Telescope, has showed all of us that with the international cooperation, how the countries can work together, create synergies and benefit from the results of this type of cooperations. And from that point of view, we always thinking that with the win-win mindset and candid offerings, we can successfully develop joint space missions and programs together. Regarding our plans for the coming years, we will continue our space programs. Yesterday, we have signed a deal with Israeli Aerospace Industries to procure two earth observation satellites, which is the continuation of Earth Observation Program of Azerbaijan. And in the coming years, of course, we will also replace our telecommunications satellites, as well as we are developing the space ecosystem in Azerbaijan and increasing the awareness of young generation regarding the space and space technologies. So these are our main goals, and we are open to the collaborations and both bilateral and international cooperations.
Okay. And another follow-up question for Dr. Finchinger, because we know that this time at IEC, China space companies is the largest number of companies here at IEC. What's your assessment of China's space programs in recent years? And what experience can other emerging countries take from China's, you know, space programs?
Well, thank you for this question, indeed. We are extremely happy that China is the premier sponsor and exhibitor here at the IEC. And we are very happy to welcome a big number of Chinese specialists and also representatives of the leadership in space from China here at the IEC. China has shown over the last years a tremendous dynamic development in its space program. You are regularly advancing also earth observation constellations. You're bringing the BeiDou navigation system is operational. And China today is connecting with a lot of emerging space countries in order to set up cooperation, in order to help them, in order to provide them with opportunities. Because an emerging space country will not be able from zero to develop a satellite, to have an astronaut doing experiments on a space station.
We know that recently, China and South Africa signed MOU on the space projects. And can you tell us about that?
Yes, absolutely. We are very grateful for the BRICS partnerships. And therefore, part of within the BRICS and of course, the very strong bilateral cooperation that we have between South Africa and China, that we have just recently signed to two MOUs.
Two MOUs.
One on the China manned space program, which is such a critical memorandum of agreement or memorandum of understanding, where the focus really is to bring in academia, research entities, as well as the industry to work together with Chinese counterparts. The second MOU that we've signed, it's on the International Lunar Research Station for young generation, for young people in South Africa to really participate from academia, from the industry, as well as the rest of the country. We use all these BRICS partnerships, especially the partnership that we have with China, to also assist in building capacity to the rest of the continent.
Indeed, humans have lived on Earth for thousands of years. Through innovation and collaboration, we have overcome many gaps and obstacles. Although we face numerous challenges today, let's not forget that we have only one Earth, share the same universe. And of course, we don't want to leave these current problems for future generations.
You're absolutely rightly, actually. Every generation has its own mission. And I believe in the recent years, actually, the key questions will be, how could we better allocate and utilize space resources? And also, how could we effectively harness space technologies for the benefit of humanity? And I believe international communication and also cooperation are essential.
Exactly. In addition to cooperation between different space agencies, organizations, collaboration among media is also critical, whether it's collaboration in content, in channels or branding. We are innovating and collaborating to provide the public with more valuable and meaningful content.
Absolutely. Actually, although we have different cultures, different customs, that doesn't hinder us from finding common points of actually interests. And also, together, we can work towards the fate and future of humanity, generating more creative ideas, dialogues and also solutions.
Indeed. Today's conversation has been really meaningful. And thanks to all the guests for participating. And we are looking forward to the opportunity to engage in even deeper conversation.
Thank you all so much for your time. And actually, until next time, goodbye.
See you.
Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.